I mean, five thousand on the maintenance or repair. Eighty-four GM, yeah. Military truck. Twenty-four volt.
I've had a lot of people call me that.
Well, and Josh do that, the five thousand is just in, it might be a very high number. Um, just to have it analyzed in which I don't know if the highway department um could analyze it and double check it, um being a county vehicle.
I mean, it's great to use it now, but we're trying to look at the future, three years when it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
How many miles did it have on it?
I, I can't, I don't recall, sir.
But that's a discussion of budgets.
You have a question?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We cobbled up too much time on it.
Okay. The next um was the increases um on the maintenance contracts. I won't leave that the same, it has thirty-five thousand on it, um initially um with nineteen thousand previous years. So that would decrease the overall total on my budget sixteen thousand dollars. But for utilities, I increased it five thousand. Reason for the increase is uh with the boiler repairs and stuff like that, we're going to, and when they test it, get, you know, run through the checks and balances and with the AC uh repairs and stuff like that. We're going to use water, extra water, we're going to use extra gas um as they redo their repairs. So I just increased it. Currently, we're still setting with uh twenty-two thousand still with underneath utilities uh, which I think that's a little. Should be a little bit lower than that, probably around eight thousand dollars lo- lower than that, um just for current past years from where we should be on a consistent year of business, open, uh should be. So with anticipation of the excess water usage, gas usage, um I see the utility being used up a little bit more.
Backup to making contracts?
Yes, ma'am.
You have nineteen thousand, but your request for thirty-five.
That's what I said, I want to eliminate the thirty-five request and put it, and put it back to the nineteen thousand, sorry.
Okay.
So maintenance contracts, nineteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the other increases I have was building repair and structure. Um, I presented numerous um photos and concerns with uh, which I'm still working on, getting contact with contractors and stuff like that. Um, the issues that we have, the building, uh, kind of very, very difficult, get contractors to even come in, they can even give me an estimate.
What exactly are you wanting to repair?
The plaster walls, the cracks in the walls, um example, above the commissioners, scene area, like the crack. What has happened that over the years, the um humidity gets in between the plaster, concrete, um, you know, pushes it out, makes bubbles, you know, busts off. Um, probation hallway, if you get a chance, probation hallway would be a prime example of those issues. Um, and this plaster is very thick and very heavy when it falls. So we have to get, we've been trying to get contractors to come in, give me estimates or any ideas and options to present to the commissioners and council if need be, um, on what, how to proceed going forward.
Is that the only thing that you're looking at repairing, is just plaster walls?
Plaster walls and um seen on the structure on the floors, you can see uh where the tile is. So the tile, plaster walls, and the marble all need to be looked at. And at this time, like plaster even itself is almost a specialized contractor to even get it to come in. Heating and, heating and AC, put a ten thousand dollar increase on that because as I have purchased last year, the new compressor um for the primary train unit outside um is still sitting in the museum. For the fact that across the board, talking to contractors that have knowledge of it, um, in which I have seen a report from an insurance claim where it gets hit by lightning. My challenge to the contractor before he installed it was what kind of power or surge protector can we put on that train unit? I was talking to Watson, to A.H. Chapman, to uh, I think the Shambal Sons. But they said that for some weird reason, it gets heated, so uh, just put that for the AC, so that way that can finish off repair because um R twenty-two refrigerant, once he puts the compressor in, it's going for over a hundred dollars a unit. So it takes about a hundred and twenty units to fill that thing back up.
So it's still sitting in the basement though?
It's sitting in the museum, the compressor.
So it's not being utilized yet?
No, not, it's not being utilized yet. The backup train unit is the one giving the building AC right now.
So the increase is for exactly what?
For the maintenance cost for what's left, so if they gets in there and they puts a new compressor in, other com- other.
Surge protector.
Yeah, correct. Sorry.
But if it's still in the basement, not being used, why will we need this?
Well, it's going to be utilized when boiler system is on, then where they no longer need for an AC, it gives them the ability to work on the AC, you know, with the boiler system down. So that way, because the way the current system is, other than third floor, if the boiler's on, the second and first floor does not have AC. If the AC's on, second, third, second, first and second floor doesn't have heat because they run independently. They run, so they're both use the same water source to supply heat or AC to the building. On capital. You have a question?
Are you using this page? Are you using the worksheet?
I'm using. What? Oh, because I'm jumping all over the place, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry, yeah.
You're fine.
Still learning. The la- last two is uh request for utility shed. Utility shed that I have now was a decent size for just a long time, but when I have supply for. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second page.
So it's not the. So what line item were you doing?
The very last one, number seventy-four.
I didn't realize it jumped. I'll learn. The utility shed that we have now, and with the discussions of and the need to do something with that museum, um where I currently have my push mower, my walk behind snow blower, my seasonal um solar salt, or, I'm sorry, um sidewalk salt. Which I buy in bulk because it's a lot cheaper that way, um, those items would not be able to stay in the museum, nor do I have place to put them in my shed. I have done, I went and got estimates and as the year went on, month after month, and the increase in uh supplies and materials, they got way too high to even consider. But the amount that I'm requesting is a lot higher than what, just in case for materials than what the sheds, which is a twelve by sixteen. So one here as a quest would be, would cover a twelve, I'm sorry, a twelve by twenty shed, which would go in the same slab that our current utility shed would fit on.
Look like one of these.
Yes, ma'am.
So the twelve by twenty shed will cost forty thousand dollars?
With the shipment of it, like if I go from here local, um, the last estimate for like Little Fawn, it was twelve thousand something dollars. And that's a clean game.
Twenty?
Correct.
Why are we asking for twenty?
To make sure that I have with the cost of an increase in materials and everything else, that I have the cost covered to be able to purchase you those sheds. I feel I can't predict what the materials are going to be when this, if this budget was fully going to affect at the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so you're saying at the time that you got the Little Fawn estimate, you don't think that's going to be the estimate going forward?
No, I do not.
Because you've got two estimates and the increase really.
Correct. Yeah, if it jumps. Uh, Little Fawn was over two thousand dollars and Little Flame was over five.
Is there any way to get Little Fawn to update that estimate before we do the final one?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That would be the best option I could do, I didn't even have exactly what you needed.
But the current situation, if I was to do, um, try to squeeze this out, just the general maintenance on the lawnmower alone, I feel like uh six hundred dollars a month, or six hundred dollars per season, two seasons to go get it maintenance and service. Something that I think that just changes oil and checking the plates, the custodian can easily do if they're responsible, you know, responsible for using the lawnmower. This would give me adequate room, storage room for all my equipment, all of the studio equipment, and the storage room for the sidewalk salt, um, which is probably roughly about fifty bags, fifty, fifty bags, yeah, fifty bags, a fifty pound bag.
But right now, the mower, the snow mower, the salt is all in the museum?
Correct. Um, last one, give you nine hundred, four thousand forty, which is fixtures and furniture. There's an increase of a thousand, a lot of, a lot of fixtures around here, lighting fixtures, um, you still have the old um tube knob wiring to them, um, a lot of corrosion, easy to replace. A lot of the, I've already this year replaced a lot of the drain pipes and um scene fixtures because of decay or um malfunctioning. And there's more to go, you know, this would give me the ability to be able to go through and fix those and get those up.
Is that, where are you at?
The um four thousand forty fixtures and furniture. That's all I have.
I have a wrong question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, on your part-time custodian, do you still need two?
Yes.
And part-time help is just one, right?
Yes. Just hoping that with that, leaving and ending up with the two at twenty-five, just gives me a better chance of.
I'm just asking for this, so I can have this on.
Have your positions been filled this year, completely, or part-time?
The custodian part-time position, um, it was filled and um we had it parked uh a couple weeks ago, um, so right now, the custodian part-time position is open.
So it was filled most of the year? Both of them?
Correct.
No, you didn't have two part-time. You have a.
Well, okay, part-time help and custodian part-time, because the part-time help was covered all year across, custodian part-time, um, Shaylon was on, and then I had a gap, just like.
Just for a couple days.
Yeah, and then Denise came on and uh. So I have one part-time help, which is.
One, but in case he needed one for like COVID and everything, he has, he'll get to hire two to stay within his budget.
My current part-time help is twenty-five hours every two weeks.
So if he did hire another one, he could have them pop out if something came up.
Sure, a lot of things.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, dude.
Thank you, sir.
Good, more? I don't have too much um increase wise, um, I did for myself, M I W's put increase, um, it, especially for my F D's, like, I don't know if everybody understands how much time they put into helping along with the time I put in, um, all the way from, you know, family events holidays, they get sixty dollars, they can, I know the surrounding counties are able from a hundred and fifty to two fifty for their F D's. So I put like a seventy-five dollar increase on, or for seventy-five dollars for them for next year, and only a seven percent increase on myself, but we have been slaying, so they've been a great help to me. Um, other area, um, I didn't increase the autopsy fund, but just so you guys know, um, Tippecanoe County has began sending us bills for anybody from Carroll County that they do an autopsy on. So instead of us just doing autopsies, we are getting their bills too. So I'm down to, I think, like twelve thousand this year left, and we're in part of the time of the year where we tend to get busy. So I can see that we need to be hired if she's autopsy'd, like everything.
Do you have a say in whether they autopsy?
So anybody that's from Carroll County that becomes deceased while they're in Tippecanoe County, they're autopsied.
If it is transported, um, like, say we have a cardiac arrest that's transported there, I know we had one last week, um, if they choose to do an autopsy, as long as they can justify that the call originated in our county. So rec, um, your overdoses, there, there are some medical that could fall under that, and she chooses to bill us, there's state statute that as long as you can prove that it originated in our county, then we are responsible to pay the autopsy.
So you don't have a say in whether you autopsy or not, or if it's state statute? If you, if you were autopsying in our county, would you have a say of whether you would autopsy or not?
Um, I, you, the coroner has the judgment as to whether we autopsy or whether we don't, but not because of Tippecanoe. If it's out of county, that's their judgment, not mine.
And we send all of ours out of county?
We don't have a hospital.
Isn't there a reason to do one?
I mean, yeah, but she doesn't, I mean, they're coming into her ER and she doesn't know anything about them, so I know she's autopsying a lot, I don't, I don't necessarily know them, I've called Doug on a couple of them to justify. Because when the start of the year, we started again, and it's a new coroner over there in um White County Coroner, and I both talked about it because we've never gotten these bills. Um, but that's what he said too, is we want at least justify that, you know, so most that so far I've gotten, I've gotten with Doug, um, and made sure that what the call is about, because I have no clue, if I'm not called here, I don't have a clue what goes there. Um, unless I'm listening to the.
Well, we're not getting bills unless your call to the call.
No, we don't get these, because like, so say like last week, we had, and I don't even know what it was, I know we had a, a, a female that was, a CPR was in progress to scene, they don't call me unless they call it at the scene, but ambulance transported because they got her back. Well, I do know that she did pass away a few days later, so then I'm guessing they will do an autopsy on her, I haven't gotten that bill yet, but I'm guessing they will, so then I have no clue. Like, I only know because I happen to be listening and I've had a couple reach out to me about this person to see if the person did pass away, so that's the only reason I know she did.
I would assume that because of death of a Carroll County resident, that you should be contacted. Maybe I'm wrong, but I would think that would be.
Are they protocol, are they doing this because of COVID?
Um.
Some of them?
I don't know exactly, but all her re- some, I'm guessing, but others just like that, I mean, if she doesn't know the background behind something, she's going to autopsy.
But there's a rec, and somebody goes and they die in a couple, three days, they're going to do an autopsy to find out why.
Yep. So those costs are, I mean, because we're all at county all the time. I even Methodist can send us, I didn't, nobody's ever really done, but it's happening now.
Now, are we getting billed by Tippecanoe County plus the pathologist that does?
No, we're getting.
We're just getting the pathologist's bill.
We're getting the pathologist's bill from Tippecanoe County Coroner, so we pay, well, we pay the treasurer for Tippecanoe County, um, basically the pathologist fee.
Pathologist's fee.
Is there a set fee per?
Yeah. Theirs was, I think their doctor's fifteen hundred, so about fifteen hundred on every autopsy. Now that also depends, I'm sure, if they run toxicology, if they don't, and that just depends on like run, how much that runs.
Are there any of these that are questionable, whether they should have been autopsied?
Um, just, I mean, I don't know without being, I don't know how much I have to be able to go into with their medical records and stuff, because technically it's not my case, so, people-wise.
Mind boggling that they can bill us whatever they want to bill us.
Yep.
And with, with no oversight.
Yeah.
I mean, there's nobody to oversee this, it's just a judgment called by one person.
Right.
And we have to pay for it.
Yep, unfortunately, like I said, it is a state statute, if we can, they can originate, if they can verify originated there. Medical calls is where that's going to get tough, because where do you determine if somebody's heart attack started at this point versus another point? I mean, that's a tough one for me, I mean, obviously.
Well, they're using this as a fundraiser, so that's uh really unfortunate.
Right. Yep, so we have gotten quite a few of those, just FYI, so I didn't ask for an increase, but that's just something that can, you know, can keep in the back of your mind, because we've been using our autopsy money basically just on our own.
Well, I feel that if we're going to be getting certain charges, that you need to get more involved and find out why.
Well, I can only tell it when, whatever they're willing to give me, I mean, it's, it's.
You mean to tell me they're not going to give you information when you're the Carroll County Coroner?
If they don't pay it, they'll probably stop, they'll probably stop billing.
Hmm, I don't know about that.
I mean, I don't believe that, you're the Carroll County Coroner, you have every right to know the information of why they're doing autopsies on our people.
Well, but they're technically not ours, because they end up being, being kind of case, they don't, they don't die here, so.
Okay, so you're talking about just the ones that we don't transport there?
I have, I have control over the ones we don't transport.
Okay. That's like, you're meaning everyone that you sent there?
No, I have control over anyone that passes away in our county.
Inside Carroll County, so you're just talking about.
As soon as they cross that border, even if they're in the back of the ambulance, it becomes the other county, wherever they, uh, White County, Tippecanoe's usually where they go, so as soon as they cross the border.
Okay, so you just, okay, they die here in their home, you put them in, or, or they have a heart attack in their home, and they're transported to Tippecanoe County, they pass away in the hospital, then that's there.
Yep. If they're transported, it does not become ours.
So we only have control over the ones that are gone, that are here, that EMS calls.
Who oversees you then?
Nobody, the governor, I don't know.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So somebody who's capable oversees you, right?
Not really.
No?
You have an association.
I mean, we have a state board association, I'm on that, I'm on that state board association as a board member, but.
Well, I mean, somebody has to be able to, to this, I mean, so she, let's just say she autopsied every single person and none of them were justified, who, what, what oversight body can come back and, and?
I mean, we would take that, I guess, to the state board, I don't know who would make, I mean, it's the coroner's judgment whether they decide, I can, I could autopsy every single person in our county, and I don't know that anybody could really do anything about that. If, when in doubt, if we have any question, we do one.
So if we had a morgue, you would do, I mean, who does our, if we had a morgue, when we had a situation?
Morgues are irrelevant. They're still going to die there.
If we had a morgue.
Because we don't have a hospital.
You would, you would do autopsies, wouldn't you, here, because they have to be done at a hospital?
No, I would do it here if we had a morgue.
So you would do.
We would cut out basically our storage fees and our morgue fees that we pay right now.
So let me repeat that one more time, if we had a morgue and we had a situation where we had a building to assume this, you would do the autopsies here in county?
Not if they've been transported to the hospital, but still not if they've been transported.
Major expense is going to be the pathologist that does. The autopsy.
We'd have a few storage.
Autopsy.
Do what?
You would call somebody in.
We still, yeah, that's basically what we would have.
Specialized.
So we would still have the cost.
We're going to have the cost of a doctor.
Oh, okay. That's what I was trying to say.
Which is, how about a month?
Um, fifteen to seventy-five on autopsy.
Fifteen hundred?
And that doesn't include like a toxicology, most of them we can get, state has a grant right now, so right now, if we have any suspicions, um, somebody might have overdosed, I mean, that, any suspicion, we don't have, I mean, not have proof, if we don't know, then the state will pay it right now, but that's a grant, so I don't know how long that will last. Or if we request something additional, like sometimes we'll request like a glucose level or something, carbon monoxide, we've asked for that before, um, those are additional, so we pay those separate, but the state mostly has picked up our toxicology bills through the grant. Which is good, because they're about two hundred dollars.
Well, I would have to assume that if you start getting more of those and the other counties start getting more bills, you're all going to obliterating, saying, whoa, what's going on?
Well, like I said, so far I've checked with Doug almost all, the ones I've gotten, I mean, luckily we have gotten a huge amount, we've probably gotten five or six maybe so far, I mean, but that's a big chunk of money. And so far, we've pretty much decided that most of them have been something that's been transported either, they tried to work them, like they have gotten something a little back, so. Um, the other one, I did add a cell phone again, I, I know I asked last year, this is really, really important, and I don't want to stress this one of anything, because again, my personal cell phone, we go to crime scenes, so if we have a case that goes for my whole phone, my whole personal life, which has my school life and my work life and everything else on it, goes for it. So I really feel this is huge, um, my detectives are very, and my prosecutor cringe that I don't have a phone that I can use specifically just for um this, because you've got emails, you've got everything coming over. And I know FirstNet does the nice um forty dollars, they keep low cost, but that one is an important one, if I asked for anything, that would be.
Can you piggyback on like the sheriff's department's plan, if we checked that out?
I have not, because I didn't know, it could be in a different department.
Like, I don't know that either, if they did that, or I know Mark has a plan that he said he could add people to, I thought.
And it drops it down to thirty-five dollars a month, is what I'm like.
Oh, okay. I know mine's under the fire department personally, just so I mean, I know, but yeah, if you, I mean, I don't know if I can piggyback, but I don't know on that one, but I'm sure they piggyback ones, because that's how we do the fire department, so.
Might need to check that out.
Okay.
You might know.
Okay, yeah.
When I was checking on it, that was the difference, if they have their own plan, it's forty dollars a month, if they give me on somebody else's, then it's thirty-five dollars a month.
Okay. Um, and then um training I did increase, we prosecutor and detectives have asked me to several different um trainings that are important for me, um, along working with them.
Can we jump back up to the fuel line?
Yes.
I mean, the fuel line is up like.
Yes.
Six times the amount.
We have a bigger truck, um, and.
I can't imagine that fan was too fuel efficient, was it?
Well, no, uh, I don't remember, because I didn't really have to fill up all that much, um, when I have a call, we typically go out of town two or three times a week for that one call. So you consider that's a lot of driving, and that one thing will get me about probably two times back and forth, maybe three, it'll get me about fourteen miles to go.
Do you have?
And I, some of it I just put because I didn't know what was going to happen.
Your.
Yeah, that's, that's. Do you, I mean, I assume you keep stats on like your runs and uh, do you keep like a mileage log of when you fuel up and that type of thing, okay.
I keep all log and I have all receipts that I send to the auditorium.
Can you give your fuel up? Do you have a entry mark?
We have.
Do they give it, do they give you a discount?
I don't know, I think we talked about this before.
Yeah, because I wondered why you weren't on the web, but.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
The wax card.
Yeah, you asked me about that before, I don't know if we ever decided why we didn't.
We might check it out and compare.
Okay. I mean, it's a tax.
I think you do get a discount.
I would say, I feel like we do, but I don't.
We get a rebate also, so just wanted you to, you might check it out.
Okay.
Are you in need of utilities?
Um, well, right now, obviously, no, but I'm, I, we put in, I think, hoping that, you know, we would hopefully soon have a morgue. I mean, that is another huge security issue, because we're sending our decedents to another county where we aren't really having a good security, I know you can send it out, and um, I mean, that's, we, we aren't able to watch and know who's. I have no agency in and out and, I mean, that's, we, we aren't able to watch and know who's in and out in somebody else's facility, so. Security wise, that's a big, that we just wanna watch a building be a big.
So, if they didn't have an autopsy, would we keep them in morgue and then they would go to the funeral?
Not necessarily. If somebody hasn't decided, because if it's sudden, they don't necessarily know who they're doing, so yes, we would store it till they decide.
In the county if you have one.
If I hadn't, yep. And I have had to do that and our, the bad thing is, is our other counties are getting full. We ran into a spell where I had four calls in two days. White County was slammed at the same time, so we ended up in half storage. I ended up being able to go to Rossville. Thank goodness the funeral homes, one of the funeral homes worked with me there, but it was a case of we weren't sure whether to autopsy or not, but we ended up autopsying. So, we're running into the fact that we're running out of places to go at times because everybody's getting slammed and full. It's been an issue a couple of times. We're, in the last year, we got really busy where it was an issue and then we just had those recent spell where it's been an issue again. They have, they can hold three and so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Morning. Morning. Just off the day one, any questions for me?
With your electric, is, is, is that just due to increase in electric costs or?
Yes, I increased electric from, I'll say, it was twenty-two hundred dollars last year to twenty-five. I was a little uncertain when I filled out this budget that it was going to hold up. The camping has kind of, had kind of backed off in July for a little bit. Now it's picking back up. So, the bills between the two parks are running thirty, four hundred dollars. Three hundred, I was gonna say three hundred with the max on the combined. So, we're having a lot of usage in the park. Some people are, you know, most people have, are using campers or using thirty M service. So, I increased that just to make sure that we had enough to carry us through the year. I, like I said, when the budget was initially filled out, you know, at the rate right now, we have, we have thirteen eighty in there. That does not count in most of August. I don't know if July has been out of there or not, has been taken out of the lineup. I have, I have had a budget worksheet which I'll begin in three, three days to be available to pick up. That's the reason I increased that. To start at the top, a park steward that we, whom we initially put that in and you approved, we paid for the park steward. We request him six fifty. That is four to six months of the time that the park is open for camping, Deer Creek Park steward. This gentleman does all the cleaning, the receipts, taking in a monies, handout of rules, the cleaning of everything, the building. And plus, he goes over and above and works the other six months of the year just, I mean, as a, you know, part time basis just to, to keep it up. That's the reason I, I requested a hundred dollars more for him in appreciation and I think if he is worth that, him and his wife. Moving down to housekeeping and office supplies, I increased those by fifty dollars. The office supplies basically, we use receipts that are created here in county in triplicate. They have gone up. We're paying the least, say if we order twenty-five, it helps more than it does almost in much of the few order fifties. But we have to go to American order almost, so I gotta wait until they run low. So, I increased that. I will be ordering one more, which is going to pretty much wipe out the office supplies of probably twenty, twenty-five or fifty more. The housekeeping supplies, due to the high demand for campers and clubhouse rental at Deer Creek Park, we, we are using quite a bit more toilet tissue, paper towels, soap, bleach that regists ourselves, or fifty, fifty mix of bleach, air fresheners, so on and so on, window cleaner, toilet bowl cleaner. So, we're at sixty-one thirty on that. I am getting a list together right now as to what they're gonna need for the remaining two months. Electric, we discuss. Repair and maintenance, I increased by, by a hundred dollars. One of the reasons for that is four hundred dollars does not hardly cover two parts for repair and maintenance. Luckily, you know, we can go to furniture and fixtures for some of the things to make repairs and things like that. But we discovered that none of us were experts at winterizing the park at Deer Creek. So, we had, a few years ago, we had new showers put in. We found out after the first year, when I shut down the water, that those showers had to be taken apart. They got staked out of the place in the spring. So, we have that hired now by local credit director. If she's a just service call, I can raise from seventy-five to a hundred and seventy-five, depending on how long the time is there. That's the reason for the increase on that, repair and maintenance. The trash and miscellaneous, I don't know if you're aware, but we have been, there was a function this month, we're still in August. That was at Fresh Coast Park. The commissioner's okay. We have a gentleman that's been coming in and playing music one night, on Saturday night. In August, there's another one on nine eleven and another one in October. And next year, I would like to get another dumpster, either from the same dump or another one that may be more local. So, that's the reason I put in the two hundred dollar increase on that. I think between the initial six hundred and the extra two hundred will have enough with, with money left over hopefully to cover those two. Furniture and fixtures, I just kind of, that's it. The last increase, I just wanted to, to mention that fact. We, we're doing, we're planning on doing an upgrade of LED lighting in the basement of the clubhouse at Fresh Coast Park, or at Deer Creek Park. And hopefully, we can take back extra money and do an upgrade on our fluorescent lights. They're gonna be just an LED fluorescent upstairs and downstairs. That's the plan, the plan for next year for furniture and fixtures. Hopefully, nothing major is needed. One thing I wanted to mention to you, I do have a, a budget worksheet, the donation fund. We just, I just put in seventy-five dollars this, this month. It's changing from four seventy-seven to five fifty-two, so there will be a change here. Right now, just, just for general information to the council, year-to-date collections for the two parks is at three, four seventy-five. I think last year, we brought in about half of the budget that we have received. We were able to back my rounds. I think we're gonna be better this year. I think it's gonna surpass that. So, we have the clubhouse at Deer Creek gets rated almost every weekend for Bureau out there. Possible nineteen eighty. Just had a reunion there this past weekend, camping every day weekend, so. There's a lot, a lot of things going on and I'm just trying to submit this budget to tell you about the cost of spending that we need to plan for next year. Any questions?
When, have you, have you increased rates for camping?
No, we, our camping rates at Deer Creek Park are thirty dollars for a RV and that's right on par with state market. They charge thirty dollars for electric things. That's just electric hookup. We do often water hook up here because they're sticking in a, in a, like. We've had some requests for, for people that have larger campers that aren't regular campers up there, to upgrade a couple spots to fifty, you know, because, I don't know, I have an air conditioner in my camper, but I don't say anything, they're all fine. And they have to run, you know, some, two monster air conditioners to cool a camper. That's the, that's the reason for the request for fifty, fifty M service. Maybe we can upgrade that to, to like four down the road.
When they want their campers, they're gonna be charging a lot more because they have a bigger need.
They only, they're not able to use the full capabilities of what they have in their camper because of the thirty M outlets that we have. And that's all been upgraded in the last ten to fifteen years. We've put in all the next water lines and all been looking at the wiring, the outlets up there, so. It's like anything else. It's underground. What's above ground, it's wearing there, so that's, that's where the, the outlets are at, so. Yeah, but we charge thirty dollars for that. Even if you have a tent and put on an electrical water outlet or electrical water campsite, it's still thirty dollars because ten dollars if you're using a primitive site. But if you wanna set up a tent and use a, a modern site, you pay for the modern site, so. Anything else? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, thank you very much.